Well, good morning, everyone. We'll call the June 3, 2014, meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. And we'll ask Vice Mayor Vicky Foot to lead us in our invocation and pledge. And if you would, please.
Our most loving Heavenly Father, we thank you for a night of rest and sleep, and we thank you for the dawn of this new day, another opportunity to love and serve you. And Fathers, we gather here this morning as city and government leaders to do the work of the people. We humbly ask for your guidance, Lord, and your help. We thank you, Lord, that we have the health to do your work. Father, we ask that you help us to be cooperative with one another, encouraging of one another. Most of all, Lord, we ask that you help us to make wise decisions that benefit the people of this city. We thank you, Lord, for everything good that is going on in this city that pleases you. And, Lord, we pray for your help in solving some of the problems we have. Father, there are times we don't know what to do. And so, Father, we ask that you step in and intervene at those times and help us. Forgive us when we fail you, Lord. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I plead the living and dead in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need item three, roll call. And I think you can show all council members present. And item four is the approval. We've got several minutes to approve this morning. Approval of the minutes of the May 6, 2014, city council meeting, minutes of the May 15, 2014, special call city council meeting, and the minutes of the May 20, 2014, special call city council meeting. Council has a copy of those minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, well, and no objection, we'll accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to be heard on any item under new business, if you let me know at the time, we'll be happy to give an opportunity to come up and address the council. Item six, we have a couple of proclamations and a recognition this morning, so let me come down and we'll get those done. Many of those occur. And for this, let me call on Hank Schockford to come up, also David McVeigh, club president of Jackson Country Club, and David Crafton, general manager and director of golf. A few guys have come up. We're going to do a proclamation celebrating 100 years here in this city. Good to have you all here this morning. Proclamation, whereas on February 7, 1914, four members before the assassination of Archduke Ferdinand, an event which precipitated World War I, five citizens of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, applied for a charter to incorporate the Jackson Country Club for the purpose of serving its members and community. Whereas originally located at the top of the hill on Prince Street, on eight and one-half acres with 25 leased acres, the clubhouse and a nine-hole golf course was opened in 1914 and served its members through the roaring twenties until it relocated to its current location in 1929. And whereas with the new clubhouse and 18-hole golf course, the club moved north to the current location and became the center of social life in Jackson, Madison County, hosting special events, parties, weddings, dances, and even politicians and the likes for a new 100 years. And whereas the Jackson Country Club became an integral part of golf in the mid-south, hosting more Tennessee golf championships than any other club in the state of Tennessee and providing a venue for exhibitions by great champions such as Reagan, Sneed, Nelson, Hogan, Milkoff, Palmer, Wright, and Zaharias. And whereas the Jackson Country Club has been the home course for its own great champions such as Albert Stone Jr., Beverly Eller Pierce, Billy Walker, and Danny Green. And whereas in recognition of 100 years of service to the community, the city of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, joins its members, staff, and guests, past and present, in the celebration of its 100th anniversary. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 3, 2014, as Jackson Country Club Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate this milestone anniversary. It's an honor for me to present this to you all and to thank you for your existence in Jackson, and thank you for everything you do to build our city.
I'd like to accept this on behalf of our membership and Board of Directors of the Jackson Country Club and in recognizing the contribution to the community over the past 100 years. Thank you.
Hey, David, if you would, just hang up here with us, if you would. We have one other proclamation to read this morning and present to a very special person that we know has been a big part of our community for a number of years. This is the 2000 Albert A. Stone Jr. Cup proclamation. Whereas Donald David Crafton is -- come on up. I'm sorry, come on up here. You stand beside him and kind of hold him up. This is Kathy. Whereas Donald David Crafton is and has been a distinguished citizen of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, since September 1989, serving as an ambassador for the Great Game of Golf. And whereas David was born in Houston, Texas, September 23, 1958, to Billy and Donald Crafton. David is the son of a preacher man and traveled throughout Texas as his father moved from church to church. In 1970, David's family moved to Marble Falls, Texas, where, under the guidance of his uncle, Uncle Joe, David discovered the game of golf playing on the hard scramble courses of the Texas Hill Country. David played high school golf and basketball, including Crawell's 1976 state champion basketball team. And whereas David attended college at Southwest Texas State University in San Marcos, Texas, supplementing his income as a lifeguard and thus a member of the Aqua Enia Springs underwater show. David played the witch doctor with second billing to The Diving Pig. In 1978, David worked as assistant golf professional at Horseshoe Bay Country Club and Resort, spent time as a touring golf professional playing throughout the southwest United States, and served as resident golf professional at the Oaks of Kingsland Golf Course in Kingsland, Texas. 1986, David became the assistant golf professional at Hillwood Golf Club in Nashville. In 1989, he became the head golf professional of the Jackson Country Club. In August 2007, he was promoted to his current position of general manager, director of golf at the Jackson Country Club. David's been married for 31 years to his wife Kathy and two children, Pamela and Carter. And whereas during David's career, he has achieved many honors, including a full member of the Professional Golf Association, the Tennessee Section Merchandiser of the Year for Private Clubs two consecutive years, the Tennessee Section Golf Professional of the Year, recipient of the Horton Smith and Bill Trussberg Awards by the TGA. Additionally, David served as secretary vice president, president of Tennessee Section PGA, as a board member of the Tennessee Golf Foundation, and a member of the Club Managers' Association of America. David's support of golf tournaments and other charity events in Jackson is well documented, resulting in raising millions of dollars. And whereas in recognition of his life and dedication to the furtherance of the Great Game of Golf here in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and as part of the 2014 Stone Cup, the official golf championship for Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, let it be known that the honoree for the 2014 Stone Cup is David Crafton. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby jointly proclaim the 2014 Albert A. Stone Jr. Cup and the official golf championship of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, this third day of June 2014, and urge all citizens to participate in this annual golf championship and to express appreciation to David Crafton and his family for their contributions to golf and this community as stated herein. David, it is an honor, true honor, for me to present this to you on behalf of the city council.
Okay, Hank, I'll get you back. I don't know how, but one of these days. Thank you very much, everyone, for this honor. It's not something I ever thought that I would get or certainly deserve, but it's very appreciated. As far as the stint as an underwater performer, it's one of the best jobs I ever had. In college, if you get paid to go swim every day for about six hours, it's not too bad. On another note, I've been very fortunate to be at Jackson Country Club for 25 years here in a couple of months, and it's been a wonderful opportunity and one that I don't take lightly, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
David, that was second billing to The Diving Pig. Item seven is first readings. We have none this morning. Item eight is the -- item one is Considerate Ordnance for the 2014-2015 Fiscal Year Operating and Capital Budget. And Al is here. The council has approved this budget on first reading. We had the public hearing, and I know we have some amendments to be added on to this budget, some generated by council, some generated by staff. So without Al, let me turn it over to you and see if there's any questions from council.
Good morning, Mayor and council. And remind you that at the -- well, let's start out with the ordinance that I'm going to ask for approval on, and that is basically a -- this is the general fund that we're addressing. And in the FY '15 budget column, you can see that revenues exceed expenses by $96,000. So we are more than just a balanced budget. We actually have revenues over expenses, and we are not dipping into the general fund fund balance. Now, on May 20, we originally presented to you an ordinance that, using the same logic, the revenue over the expense was $125,000. So Karen diligently recorded all the changes that came up in that meeting, and most of which we had presented ourselves because there were things we had left out. And you received a copy of this. And just to try and make it simple, basically, we started out with the original budget ordinance, like I said, that showed $125,000 for revenue over expense. Now we are looking at a revised ordinance that shows a revenue over expense of $96,000, and that's a net change of $29,000. Now, without going into detail of all these 30 or 40 changes here, it really comes down to the fact that after the first budget hearing meeting, I believe it was Randy that suggested we increase Central Dispatch $10,000, so that is right here, money to -- for the takeover of the JEA tower. And then we decreased revenue accordingly. You can see the check mark here on the Civic Center rental because we really don't know what we're capable of, and it would be better to be more conservative. And I think Randy also suggested that one. So the net change is $30,000 and rounded. That really makes up all of the things that were encompassed here in these changes. So what I'd like to ask for today, and I'm open to questions, but is the approval -- let me get the old one out of the way here -- of the revised budget ordinance that does show a $96,000 revenue over expense. And I'm open to questions, and I'm sure Karen, Sam would also be glad to answer anything. But we really went through all the details with the departments, and the changes that were listed here basically were all covered in that meeting. The only two or three that were -- came up afterwards were suggestions by Randy, and we followed those with Central Dispatch and Civic Center rental. And that's where we're at, $96,000. I think it's $96,171, revenue over expense.
Move the approval.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second before any discussion?
Second.
We have a second now. The council has any in discussion of the amendments?
We are voting on the amendments.
Voting on the amendments. Let me vote.
I have a question about the police administration increase. Chief, we had a $36,000 increase. I thought the professional services were for the training system. Was that incorrect or?
You're referring to the total in police administration? There was $19,800 added to add that virtual academy. There's going to be maybe a salary or two increase for automatic step raises. And then there were some personnel changes. Some people moved from one division into administration, which would have lowered the amount in the other division wherever they transferred from.
Okay, thank you.
I had one question while you were there. This may have been a misquote, but it was in the paper this morning that Chief Kendrick had said that part of the cuts were due to two retirements this June. Does that mean that you would not be asking for those to be replaced?
Oh, we'll definitely replace them. What happens when we have two retirements is because of the way our salary structure is set up, a senior officer, somebody that even if they're just a patrol officer, is going to make somewhere in the area of $16,000 to $18,000 more a year than a brand-new starting officer.
I see.
So that changes that amount.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or proposed amendments from council? If not, we are voting on the amendments, which Al just called over. We approved the budget earlier, first reading, but these are amendments to that budget. If there are no other questions or comments, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
We'll go back and approve. Their next motion needs to be to approve the budget as amended. Is there a motion? And a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Councilman Bray, are you going to vote? The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
The second item, Mayor, that we have to address is the ordinance for the tax rate. There is no change in the tax rate at $1.97. And as we discussed with the pie charts and the debt service analysis, 20% of every tax, property tax dollar, will go to the sinking fund or the debt service fund. And that's not much of a change from the previous year, if you remember the pie charts, because we were able to take some out of fund balance where we had overestimated on interest and things because of our variable rate loan, and that helped us to create a little surplus there. And it's 20, 80, and no change in the tax rate.
Okay, thank you, Al.
Move to adopt the tax rate at $1.97.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second and discussion on the tax.
Al, on the 2015-16 budget, a year past one that we're working on now, we've got to pay that $332,000 to the school department. Is that going to conceivably -- and then won't the sinking fund also have a larger percentage they'll need in that year? Is that going to --
We've got a surplus.
I know we're going to have to struggle with coming up with $300,000 or something thousand dollars.
Well, in the first year, we're paying a million dollars upfront, and that's coming out of the debt service fund. In subsequent years, it will be coming out of the general fund. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor. And it will not change the allocation here. We will have to find means of making those payments for the next nine or 10 years out of the general fund.
Okay. Part of the question there was, is the sinking fund going to need a bigger payment in that 2015-16 year than it did this year?
Well, it will because of our debt service structure, but it has nothing to do with the mixed drink.
Oh, I knew that. I knew that.
Yes.
But my concern is that the general fund's going to lose $332,000 because we've been paying to do to the schools, and also is possibly going to lose some of the tax revenue because more will have to go to the sinking fund.
That's true.
Okay.
Because the first couple of years on some of these loans, like the 15.3 million, all we have paid is interest, and now we'll start paying principal.
Okay.
So yes, you're right on 15, 16.
So we're going to have to address that issue in a year from now, whether or not to go up on our sales tax rate or reduce expenditures considerably more.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion to approve this ordinance in a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, is that it, Al?
I think so.
All right, thank you. Council, you're going to have to excuse me. I'm going to have to go back down to the podium, and we need to recognize two members that will be leaving our Civil Service Commission after years of dedicated service to that commission, so. Let me ask Lynn Higginson to come on up, and we do have two members that will be rotating off the Civil Service Commission. We have Byron Cox Jr. and Harvey Lovelace. And Lynn is here to honor them and give them a plaque for their service to this city. Lynn?
Mr. Cox, would you come on up, please? Commissioner Cox.
I thought you were going to be one of them honoring your field.
We could do that, too. Commissioner Cox, on behalf of the civil service employees of the city of Jackson, we appreciate your seven years of service on the Civil Service Board. I think you finished out an unexpired term, and then the employees elected you for another full term. And we ask Mayor to do this certificate of appreciation to you for your seven years of outstanding commitment and service to the Civil Service Commission Board.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you so very much. Commissioner Harvey Lovelace could not be here because of illness, but we have a certificate for him for five years of outstanding service and commitment to the Civil Service Board as well.
New business. Item nine is Considerate Police Agreement made effective on the first day of November 2014 between the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Delta Enrichment Life Training Academy for the lease of the Bennett Center located 96 O'Neill Street, Jackson, Tennessee. And I think we have our chief here from the Delta and Richmond Center. If you'd mind coming up and just address the council on perhaps maybe a few things which are taking place at the center. Just have a seat. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To Honorable Mayor Jerry Gist and members of the city council, excuse me, and to all present, good morning again. We are delighted to come and speak on behalf of the Delta Center. It is our home away from home. We are so grateful that it has become a part of our life, and we just want to share with you a few things that are going on at the Delta Center. The Delta Enrichment Life Training Academy Incorporated, otherwise known as Delta, Inc., was established in 1999, and it is a 501(c)(3) public charitable organization. And the mission of the organization is to support scholastic achievement, public and community service programs, cultural and social enrichment, health and wellness, and other initiatives focused on disadvantaged children, youth, and their families. Our charge to promote educational enrichment in all areas of the spectrum is supported in a holistic, comprehensive approach of service. The continuation of the lease agreement for 96 O'Neill, known as the Delta Center, will ensure that the services, projects, and initiatives designed can be implemented within the community and that future generations have equal access and a helping hand to be successful. Here are some of our current, past, and future projects. We have held Black History essay contests. We have donated to rap. We held our first Neighborhood Night Out watch party last October, and we are so appreciative of the services that we received during this night out. Councilman Buchanan had the opportunity to come by and meet some of our participants. We had the services from the police department and the Jackson City Fire Department, and we are so thankful that we were able to do this. And we're making plans to have our second night out in October of this year. We've also had ladies' night for the Dream Center, and this was a dinner and movie for the ladies of the Dream Center. We have opened our doors for Lane College to conduct their Zumba classes to get everyone, you know, in good physical shape. We have had neighborhood safety and police meetings. We've had college application workshops for the community and for our young ladies and young men who are getting ready to go to college. We host the biannual Greek Fest, which mobilizes public service organizations. This gives the community an opportunity to see all of the Greek letter organizations within the Jackson, Madison County community and to understand that we are here and want to serve the public, that we are not here as a group just sporting our colors, but that we are about public service. We also are proposing a literacy program for the children and families in the Bennett Center area. We're making plans to apply for grants so that we can stock the center with books and computers, so that we can have our doors open at least one night a week during the summer so that children can come in, take advantage of these services that we are offering. These are just a few things that we are doing at the Delta Center, and we once again appreciate and thank you for your continued support, and we look forward to the next 15 years of using the center and sharing it with the community because we realize that it is a service that is very much needed, and we just thank you for the opportunity to be able to lease the building, house our services there without having to go out and search in the city trying to find an ample space to provide services.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Yes.
Good morning to you, to my fellow council members.
Good morning to you, to my fellow council members. The Delta Center, which is a part of District Four, has been an asset with respect to serving our youngsters, serving the community. We are appreciative of you all coming in and help stabilize that particular area. As you all well know, when you stabilize an area, you enrich that area. And to the Deltas, we certainly appreciate what you're doing. And Mr. Chairman, if I'd be in order, I move that we approve the lease between the Delta Enrichment Life Training Academy and the City of Jackson.
Second.
That is in order, and we have a second. Any additional discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. DePere. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, thank you so much. And we invite you all to our team summit, which will be a training session for our parents and our youth this fall, and we would love to have some of you there to come and share with us. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you. Item two, under New Business, is we have contracts for office supplies and a couple of contracts to be approved.
It's time again to rebid the contract for office supplies for the City of Jackson. We received five bids. The low bid, New Century Imaging, is in California, and they are an incomplete bid. As you can see from your bid tab, they did not bid on the last item. So the lowest and best bidder for office supplies is A to Z Office Resource, and I'd like for you to award this based upon unit pricing.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion for approval, second. Discussion from council.
This, where is this company located?
A to Z. They're here in Jackson.
Are they? Where?
I do not know, but I know they're in Jackson. It's Susan Birmingham's.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know Susan, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Motion, a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four, under New Business, is consideration of contract for labor material required for construction of 10 tennis courts, a tennis complex project.
We took bids for the grading and drainage for this tennis complex, and the lowest and best bid was MSB Construction at $147,350.
Move for approval?
A motion for approval.
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next one is for the tennis courts and the fencing. We took bids on those. We received two bids. MSB Construction is the lowest and best bidder at $574,245.
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Item five is we have some board appointments. The Jackson Energy Authority, the reappointment of Bob Campbell. Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Motion, a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Also on the City Tree Board, we have the reappointment of David Mathis.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
And on the Civil Service Commission, we have the reappointment of Richard Beach.
So move. Second.
A motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
And on the Code Advisory Appeals Board, we have the reappointment of Frank Wagster, Leon Cutner, and Wayne Lott.
So move. Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
The Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission, we have the reappointment of Mark Carter.
So move.
Motion, a second.
Second.
Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And on the Library Board, we have the reappointment of Charles Baldwin.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Final item, no. Next to the final item, item six, we have budget amendments for this.
We have two this month. First one we have is for the Civic Center. The Civic Center has an emergency purchase for curtains that were torn and need to be replaced in the amount of $9,926. As I shared with you Thursday evening, this was in his next year's budget because this became an emergency. We went ahead and did it and took it out of the FY '15 budget.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion from council.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Will it be ready for a Miss Tennessee pageant?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that we have today is amendment in the amount of $25,000 for the SWHR Summer Youth Gang Resistance Program. There'll be a draw on fund balance in the amount of $25,000.
So move.
A motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item seven is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So move.
We did have a motion.
Second.
And a second. In discussion. Council, please vote. There being no other business, meeting is adjourned.